All right, thanks everyone. Sorry we don't have enough seats. We don't usually have this many folks show up. Let me leave it at that. I would ask for any agenda additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we add a few things to the agenda tonight. We have a liquor license to place under new business. Also, an appointment, a reappointment to the Clarendon Planning Commission.
Thank you, John.
And we also have, under Guest, I'd request that we add Mr. Flanders and his letters to the board as well.
Where you want to put the Planning Commission?
That can go under Old Business, I think.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing on all of them favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We do have quite a bit of folks in here tonight, and as you can see. And I think this, if there's no issue with the public, I would like to jump down to Old Business. And I think most of you guys are here for inclusion, Tom? All right, inclusion statements. So...
To make it legal, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go out of order this evening and begin with the inclusion statement discussion and then return to our normal agenda afterwards.
I'll second that.
Okay. All of them favor the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Obviously. So... How do we want to start then?
Well, it's all right with you.
Yeah.
We'll start off first. I'll start the conversation. There's a few people here that want to speak to this as well, but I'll start it off. I think everybody in this row knows who I am, but for those who don't, I'm John McKenna. I live up in Chippen Hook. And a group of us are asking that the town of Clarendon adopt a Declaration of Inclusion. We emailed some information to all, to the administrative assistant, and she forwarded on to you folks. I hope you've had a chance to take a look at it. And then, like I said, a few people are going to have a few things to say. I would like to start out with having that Declaration of Inclusion read. And Ed Kelly is going to do that for us. And then we'll kind of have a few other people chime in after that. It's all right with you folks?
Gentlemen, the declaration reads this way. "The town of Clarendon condemns racism and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, age or disability, and wants everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community. As a town, we formally condemn discrimination in all its forms, commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community, and will strive to ensure all our actions, policies, and operating procedures reflect this commitment. The town of Clarendon is and will continue to be a place where individuals can live freely and express their opinions." And the goal of the statement is to have every Vermont municipality adopt and implement a Declaration of Inclusion. Adopt means formal approval by the municipality's governing body. And implement means the enactment and furtherance of plans, policies, programs, procedures, and relevant training which supports and advance the intent and spirit of the declaration that I just read. And on a personal note, I hope everyone in this community will open their hearts and minds to the importance of adopting and even more importantly, implementing this declaration in the spirit and the intent that is presented to you guys tonight.
I have a question. Maybe you or John can answer it. What is the, does the state itself have any documentation such as this? Or is this independent towns?
I believe the governor did sign something to this effect. And, but there's a movement that was started by a few people that you may know, Bob Harnish, Al Wakefield, you may have heard the names anyway, Norm Cohen. Their goal was to have every single municipality in the state eventually adopt this as well. So it's, you know, every, it's not just the governor, it's that it's coming from, it's also the individual towns that are saying, yes, we really want to make sure that everyone understands that we want to be an inclusive town and we want to be open to everyone.
So this, just to make this clear to the public. This declaration is, what I'm looking here is a three paragraph statement. Have you run this by any lawyers or have lawyers looked at this at all or anything like that, John?
I'm not sure.
Yes, they have.
Oh, there we go.
You have? Okay. Anybody else like to comment on it from the public?
Well, if we can just sort of continue, like I said, there's a few more people that want to have a say. I'm going to say one or two more things and then I'm going to step aside for some other folks here. A few weeks ago, Vermont Digger had an article that said one of the biggest growing demographics of people moving into the state are members of the LGBTQ population. And they're moving in because Vermont has a reputation and a history of being very open and inclusive and progressive. However, I know of at least one family that lived in Clarendon that left because they did not feel included, they did not feel respected, they did not feel safe in this town based on some things that had happened. And everybody's always talking about ways to make sure that we're trying to get younger people to move into town, people with kids to move into town. And this was a family that had one young one that was in one of the elementary schools in the district and had another one shortly thereafter. And they're living in a different town now because they did not feel this way. And I really strongly feel that this Declaration of Inclusion could go a long way to helping people feel that we are a welcoming and inclusive town. It can go right on the website so that when somebody researches Clarendon, Vermont, they'll see that right away. And, you know, I think there are quite a few of us that could also probably share other stories. I know that in other towns close to us, people have left, moved out of those towns because they were harassed because of their race. And I don't want to see that here in Clarendon. I hope it does not happen and will never happen. But again, this sort of a statement can go a long way to letting people know that we don't do that here in Clarendon. So now I'm going to step aside and I, I can't remember if it was Carol or Matty going first.
Oh, okay. So I am here also to support adopting this Declaration of Inclusion. I think, having run for school board twice, lost both times, it's okay. They're doing a great job. I actually had to endure what I felt was quite a bit of harassment in terms of the fact of, because of who I supported in the last election or, and so, you know, I was called all sorts of, you know, things like I was a communist, a fascist, a socialist, an anarchist. My signs were taken off my property. And interestingly, there was a letter to the editor at the Herald, I don't know if anyone saw it. It was short, but I'm going to, I'm going to read it if I can. I can summarize it. It said, "My mother used to have a saying, 'There are three ways children learn: example, example, example.'" And he referred to some signs that he saw in Clarendon, he said Rutland, but he meant Clarendon. One particularly going towards the school that schoolchildren saw every day and that his niece, his daughter and his granddaughters had driven past that sign and were quite taken aback with it. And you guys may know what the sign is that I'm talking about. And he, and it was signed by Kevin Geary, my brother-in-law, who was visiting me, and I did not tell him to write a letter, but he felt strongly enough and offended enough to write a letter to the editor. So, so I think that the idea that we're inclusive includes everything, most important obviously to people who are marginalized communities, which I don't feel that I am, so I can't speak necessarily to how they feel. But I think, having worked in schools, I've seen several incidences of what I would say were anti-gay, anti-black behaviors on the part of parents and children over the years. So that attitude does exist. And I think it's important that we as a town express our belief that that just won't be tolerated here, hopefully. And the other thing I think we have to think about is, you know, John mentioned a lot of L G...
LGBTQ.
Thank you. People, you know, moving to Vermont because it's seen as a welcoming place. I know that, like, my two daughters have just moved back to Vermont and they want to live in a place that's welcoming. The town they choose to live in will, you know, it will, the attitude of the town will affect whether they determine, you know, this is a place I want to live or I don't want to live. And I think a lot of young people feel that way. They're much more open-minded than, you know, some older people. And I put myself in that category now. But, you know, I just think it's really important to the town to have to approve, and you guys who approve this Declaration of Inclusion.
Anyone else would like to talk?
So, this declaration might be something, the content of it, that might be new to some people in trying to understand, like, when I heard you ask, like, had a lawyer look through this? I think Vermont is typically a crowd of people that we sit together, we talk things out with each other, and we find out where our common ground is and we move forward like that. And that's been a reputation of Vermont for centuries, I would say. And while I think our culture is changing, we also want to make sure that we bring along some of those traditional ways of getting together and talking and communicating and learning from each other. And while I notice here that our crowd isn't really represented well, or like kids in our community, we have a couple of students here and I really appreciate their participation here, but those are the people that ultimately I think we're all really working for. And they have a language that they use, they have this kind of declaration for kids, for students, isn't anything new. And so if it's new for us, then I think what we really need to do is not just look at the statement, but look at what does it, what does it mean? What does, how would that translate into behavior? What, what could that mean for a community member in Clarendon? And I know that when I go on the website and I look at the website, without that statement of inclusion, this town doesn't immediately represent as if it's a place of inclusion and respect. And what we want to do is we want to take those steps that are necessary to say, this is who we want to be. Because when a situation happens, we want to be able to say, while we might not have the skills or the practice, we definitely want to engage. And so my hope is that if you have any questions about this declaration, that you maybe pause on any kind of like vote or motion or anything on it tonight so that you have a chance to speak to people about it, so that you can ask anybody here who brought this forward, you know, unless it's something that you are in full understanding about and feel like you've done some, some work on, I don't know your level of understanding of these types of declarations and what it means to be inclusive of all populations who have been marginalized by a dominant culture that we, that we represent here pretty much, you know, in this room. So I'm hoping that this is something where you can look around, you can find somebody that you want to engage with, both tonight regarding this, later on regarding this, or in any understanding that you might need about a population that lives with some issues that are presented by our mainstream culture. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to talk to us?
Just have a few closing remarks here, but some of the things I'm going to mention have already been said, thanks to the other speakers here. But my name's Tom Miles and I've been a resident and taxpayer, homeowner here for, since 1982. So tonight, several residents, as you've seen here of our town, came here to speak about inclusion. And you listened to the words of the declaration and you heard from some of these folks why such a declaration is important to them. Now, one may say that a formal Declaration of Inclusion for a city or town is not really necessary, that if an individual or family really would like to live here, they'll attempt to do so regardless of whether or not a formal statement of inclusion has been declared. I think that this way of thinking is a little off the mark, and here's why. Most of us are aware that many cities and towns in Vermont are experiencing declining populations. Fewer people lived in Clarendon in 2020 than in the year 2000. And I think we'd all like to see more businesses moving into our county, along with jobs, individuals, and families. A welcoming statement on a town website or posted in a town hall or library may be all that it takes for someone to see and consider joining us in our neighborhoods. On the other hand, the absence of a welcoming statement may deter them. And many businesses across the country, large and small, have embraced inclusiveness. Business leaders have recognized that a diverse and inclusive workforce brings new ideas, new customs, new thinking, which often improves their bottom line. And I believe that cities and towns that embrace inclusiveness and are welcoming can likewise benefit from new ideas, customs, and thinking, resulting in a town with vitality and spirit. It's the right thing to do. As a group, we are asking you to think about what we've said and make no final decisions tonight. We hope that you'll discuss this with your family and friends, solicit comments, get feedback on the benefits or detriment of adopting a formal declaration. If we're welcome, we'd like to come back at the end of April to continue the discussion and hopefully get you to join with 40 other Vermont municipal boards and formally adopt the declaration. Thank you. And if anybody else here that has any comments about the Declaration of Inclusion, please feel free. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Art, do you have any comments you'd like to make on this?
Well, I don't think we should vote on it tonight. I think we should table it, get feedback from the public. I know this board has gotten into trouble before in doing, making decisions without getting feedback from the public. So I think if we table it until the next meeting or a couple of meetings so that we can get feedback. Because I have some questions about the declaration that I would like to talk to some of these people about. So...
Mike, I have a question. I noticed it was placed under Old Business. Has this come before the board before?
It has.
There was some documentation that was passed our way. There wasn't an in-depth discussion and there was, and there was no presentation with it. I think it was actually like a newspaper article, if I remember right, that came our way. So there was no formal, like, all you folks tonight, there was nothing like this. There was just kind of like, hey, we've heard some towns are doing this. And that was just kind of what got passed our way.
I think what the bottom line for us at that point was to see what exactly would be in the declaration and all this kind of stuff. So that's what we were waiting for, in my opinion.
Yeah, it was, it was also right before elections and the budget and everything else. So it was kind of in the mix of, in the midst, mix of everything. And I think, I agree with Art. I think definitely, as has been suggested, I think feedback is definitely a place to start. I also, I'd like to see, somebody mentioned that you think Governor Scott did something. I'd like to see, I'd like to see what his is as well, if he just took this one or if he has a different in any way or whatever. I, I think definitely some, some, a further conversation, I think, is certainly warranted. I think that that's a good place to start.
Me, at this point, I don't have any real issues with this. I came from New York City and that area. And it was hard to go from one neighborhood to the other because of a lot of, a lot of different things that happened. And I found in my over 40 years now of living here in Clarendon that, you know, we try to help each other. Maybe we don't always agree, but we are respectful in most cases. So I think that to Bob's point, Art's point, I would like to, you know, have some conversations with some more folks in town, maybe even put this on our site and say, this is what has been suggested, you know, to more of the population could see it and weigh in. So that's what I'd like to do. But maybe the second meeting in April.
We were thinking around the 28th. Is that the second meeting?
That was what we suggested, yeah.
And that's, well, my...
A quick Google search says that Governor Scott's statement was that the state of Vermont formally condemns discrimination in all of its forms and welcomes all people who want to live and work. I'm thinking it sounds pretty similar to what...
I was going to say, it sounds pretty close.
Sounds, sounds pretty close. And then also, May 9th to 15th is an inclusion week in Vermont, but that's a 2021 article. So maybe the states have adjusted perhaps.
Okay. And I think that, I think that you'll find that the declaration that we're handing to you guys tonight has a little, is a little bit more in-depth and exactly, you know, covering like, like the governor's piece talks about employment, talks about things along those lines. And we're just talking a little bit more specifically about individuals, people, a little bit more, just hiring and things like that.
So Bob, you want to weigh in?
I would agree pretty much. And with Robert, I would like to hear feedback from more of the people from the community because there's two sides to every story. And I'd like to hear that. And we could do discussions amongst ourselves at that second meeting in April or sometime prior to.
Yeah. And just discuss what the, our next meeting, the first meeting in April, might be a good time to, if we've heard some folks' feedback...
To hear from the people.
...to discuss. But I think the second meeting, you know, which is a month away, will give us an opportunity to have feedback because what I've learned on the select board is five people sitting here can't figure out what 2,000 and some odd voters want to do. So we need some feedback on it, that's for sure. But I will, I will make this perfectly clear to all of you that are sitting here. We will move forward with this and we will come up with some kind of a, an answer by that meeting.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to make it legal, I'll make a motion that this be tabled and officially placed on the April...
25th.
25th meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all of them favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous, so that's what we're going to do. Okay?
Okay.
Just one other, one other thing, just to echo what Matty said. You all know somebody in this room, so, and most people know how to get ahold of me too. So if you have any questions, want to have a, just a one-on-one discussion about any of this, please feel free to reach out to any of us. That's why we're here, to be a resource for you folks.
For me, I think I would just want to let our legal advisor advise us as well as, you know, hear from the public. So this doesn't look that, you know, like it's closing in on people, so I just want to make sure though. Anybody else have anything? All right. You're welcome to stay and listen to our meeting.
I'll watch it on TV.
But thank you very much for taking the time, coming down.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you for your time.
We promise we're going to move ahead with this.
Get a drink of water.
I got an issue with the last wine. Hopefully they express their opinions. You all these flocks about the way to make people express their opinion. Everybody's opinion, all the way there.
Correct.
I got a problem.
All righty. Let's move right along.
Are we going back to the meeting minutes?
Yep. Back to the top.
Yeah. All right, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the meeting minutes of March 14th, 2022.
For a second? Art, second set. All of them favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right. The road commissioner is not here. Katie, do you have anything that you guys have been working on for the road commissioner?
I have four of you guys feedback that I got from towns about comp time. And there is a packet in that folder with all that combined. And I also reached out to Wallingford, Shrewsbury, and West Rutland if they do comp time. Only heard back from Wallingford and they do not. Beyond that, I don't really know much. The white stop bars were just a discussion Cash wanted to have about painting them at intersections. And I don't really know much on that, so...
Mr. Chairman, I go ahead and, I want to go ahead and make the motion that the town of Clarendon not engage in the implementation of comp time.
And after reading some of the information that Katie presented to us, I will second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that? Art, do you want to weigh in?
Well, you know, it doesn't cost the town anything monetarily, but it will cost the town in man-hours. And we're already down a guy, which we were told you couldn't run this crew with three men. So we're down one, or, yeah, we're down since Tim passed away. And now we're going to give up more man-hours? I mean, that's what it boils down to, more man-hours. I don't think, I don't think the town can afford that. And I, you know, what's in it for the town?
Yeah.
You know, if we give it to, if we give this to the road crew, what do we get?
Robbie, do you have anything you want to?
Nothing other than what I could see, it would create more work for the treasurer. Absolutely. Keeping this all straight and, like I said, to some of the stuff that I read, the other towns, I have an awful lot of concerns. So it's best to just pay them the overtime as they earn it and let it go at that.
And, and I guess the only comment I'll make because I made the motion is that I continue to go back and struggle with the fact that we would be implementing something that is illegal in every other business world in the country. And I have an issue when governments institute double standards. And ultimately, we would be instituting a double standard. And I, I struggle with that.
Katie, before I ask for a vote on this, as treasurer, do you have any comment that you would...
No. I, I support you in...
Whatever decision.
In whatever your decision is.
All right, there's been a motion made, it has been seconded, we've had some brief discussion. All of them favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let it be known that all four of us, is there any nay votes under the table? Okay. So pass that along to the road commissioner at this time, please, Katie. And the white stop bars, is he going to continue working?
I'm not really sure what he wanted to have that discussion on or about, so maybe just push it to the next meeting or...
How about, how about they're a good idea and we should have them?
I think the issue has been at the Creek Road, Walker Mountain Road, a lot of people flying through that stop sign.
Yep. Flying through pretty much every stop sign in downtown. Doesn't really matter which one it is.
The white line will help.
Yeah, I've had a few questions on Cold River Road and North Shrewsbury Road on that same issue. I've tracked the cash in it in the past.
So I think we just make the request that it's on next, next meeting's agenda.
Yep. Or when the road commissioner is present or at least submits something in writing for reasoning. I understand he has a hip replacement coming up. He has some physical stuff going on, so... All right, if no one wants to add anything, any of you folks have any comments for road work and stuff in town? All right. Approval of the select board warrants, they're floating and drifting here, we haven't all signed them. Any public comments?
We've got Norm under Guest.
Right. All right, Norm, would you like to?
Sure.
Speak to your concerns.
Unfortunately, Katie told me that she'd called me back and it never came on my answering machine, I will address that when I get. Okay, for those of you that don't know me, my name's Norm Flanders. And I've lived here for, since 1980, when I got out of the service. And I've had this thing that's run through my mind quite a few times. When you drive through other towns, you see veterans' memorials and parks and all that stuff. The only thing we have in the town is what's on the side of this building. So I wrote a letter, I did talk to Mike. Matt and I and the principal met about putting a memorial in the Peace Garden, which would make sense. People going into the school would see it. When we do the fireworks, when the fire department used to do the fireworks and everything, everybody come to that area. It makes sense to have it there. I'm here tonight to ask the board, as a town resident and veteran, I would love to see some type of town memorial honoring all our past, present, and future veterans here in Clarendon, Vermont. The only thing we have as a town memorial is the plaques outside of the town hall. I feel we owe more to our veterans. As you ride around our other communities, you see various veterans' memorials and parks honoring those community veterans. Memorial would provide a beautiful symbolic tribute in honor of those who have served in the line of duty for our town, state, and country. I'm willing to help set up a committee that will rep, that will have representation of local veterans, the fire department, and a member of the Mill River Union School District because they own the land at the Peace Garden. And will be, look, the board will be looking, or the committee will be looking for funding and establish all the groundwork. I have met with the principal at the Clarendon Elementary School regarding various uses of the school's Peace Garden. It was asked about a location, locating this memorial in Peace Garden. I have his blessing, a preliminary location, and he's waiting on more information. I'm asking the board to support me in my efforts to pursue my dreams of constructing a Clarendon Veterans Memorial on behalf of all our veterans, past, present, and future. I'm asking for your total support and blessing for this Clarendon memorial.
Um, I have a question. Have you spoken with other folks?
Yes, I have.
To the former committee?
I have talked to Dave Potter.
Okay.
Who is a military veteran, he is willing to join. He's not here tonight because he has a prior commitment. He said to let the board know that he supports us 100%. He's retired Air Force. I've talked to Art Peterson, Art Peterson's behind it, he was gonna try to be here tonight, unfortunately, he's not here, he was gonna speak. We're gonna get representation for the fire department because it's gonna be right close to the fire department. And I'm gonna get representation from this, one representative from the school board, so that we can have like five people on this committee and spearhead this and look and see how we can make this effective and representative to all the veterans. It doesn't need to be a big blown thing, blown out thing, but something that says, hey, we the residents of Clarendon, thank you. That's it. That's all I'm looking for. Okay, and the other thing I have, and Mike and I did a little research, town entry signs, when you drive all around the other towns in this state, there's entry signs, I don't care if it's a four by four or eight by eight entry sign, it says Shrewsbury, or Cuttingsville, or West Rutland, what do you have in Clarendon? Nothing. So I wrote a letter to the board. I'm here before you tonight with a question regarding Clarendon Town Entry Signs. As you ride around the state into other communities, you can see various signs with towns' name, the chartered or established date, and there's something unique to the community painted upon their signs. These signs welcome visitors to the community in such a subtle way and shows community pride. Upon entering the town of Clarendon, we have no signs as a way to show community pride as visitors either commute through or are here to visit family or friends. I've often wondered why a truly symbolic sign in tribute and honor to this beautiful community has never been erected. I'm sure if we look into this, there may be a local artist that can be a great asset in helping make this become a reality. Why doesn't the town of Clarendon have a uniquely designed sign at our borders? Sincerely, Norm Flanders.
The only recognized signs that I see is along Route 7, and that's the state signs that say Clarendon and.
Right.
First, on this, let's go back to the veterans thing. I would ask the board, does the board support forming this committee with Norm to look into the possibility of putting a memorial? Art?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I'd like to see the committee formed and maybe do fundraising and that kinda stuff, so it's not a burden on the taxpayer.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good thing.
Bob?
I'm not a veteran, but I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, I was gonna actually, we can do it after you go around the table, but I was gonna go ahead and make the motion that we officially form the committee.
Okay, before you do that though, as a sitting member, I have no issue, I am a veteran, so I'm all for it, Bob?
I definitely support our veterans and our service people that have served us in the past and are serving at this moment.
Okay.
And I'm all for it.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we go ahead and form a veterans' memorial committee with Norm Flanders, Dave Potter, Art Peterson, Chairman Cloption, and then a representative from the fire department and a representative from the school board.
You missed us again.
Norm Flanders, Dave Potter, Art Peterson, Mike Cloption.
And then the two representatives.
And then one representative from the fire department and one representative from the school board.
There a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? Are you hearing none, all of them in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Now, to your other, to your other point, you had a question?
No, no, I was just opposing.
Isn't, isn't Norm a member of the fire department?
Yes.
That's true.
Yeah, but I, I don't want to.
Cross duties.
Right, you got it.
Okay.
I'd really have.
I'll put an email out.
Matt?
No, I'm on enough committees, but I'll. Put an email out to all the guys and girls and see what wants to do it.
Yep, get one other.
All right, now to your other point.
So I think, two things, I think one of the first things we need to do, and these things traditionally fall to Katie, so don't throw something at me, Katie. But we need to start the process, the first process is finding out, because obviously along Route 7, I know there's state permitting that's required. So the first step is probably a reach out to the state to find out what they're gonna require of us, because last I knew, it's basically an act of Congress to get something along Route 7, so we better start there. But then, I would like to see us, and I'm maybe taking a different spin on it, between Clarendon Elementary and Mill River, I'd like to see there be a school competition or something to design. Welcome to Clarendon sign, and hold a competition, or hold a school, get the school involved, get the kids involved. And let them submit them, and maybe either we do or form a committee to pick, pick the best one, and we go from there, and that becomes our welcome sign.
Question. Would you put these signs just off Route 7 on coming into North Clarendon, and then one down here? So it's two signs you're.
The way I would envision it, those would be your larger ones, and then eventually down the road, we could probably get, we'd have to find out again, because the state has their regulations on street signs, but we could get some probably street signs printed with the design, smaller scale obviously, and those could go on the other major entryways into town. I, I mean, the only other major thoroughfare that we're talking is, you've got 103, and obviously 133 as well, so. But it's gonna be similar processes for Route 7 and those state roads, so the, the big one is obviously Route 7, so.
All right, so we have to do.
Some homework.
Yeah, some homework and stuff. Do we wanna table this until we do find out this?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any further action, I think we can start by, again, doing the homework and finding out what it is, and if anybody's got any ideas for the school, if we wanna go that route and get the school involved, we can go from there and formulate those ideas, and maybe, again, another meeting or two, have something ready to maybe send over to the school and start the process.
I have a recommendation. You might wanna approach Shrewsbury, West Rutland, Wallingford. They have signs on major thoroughfares. You know, ask them how they went about it. Because Cuttingsville, Shrewsbury has quite a few on 103, so. That's just my recommendation, that's another avenue of figuring out how to cut some of the red tape. But thank you for your time.
All right. Katie, we'll get some information, Katie, and work on that, and then we'll react to what the information tells us. I like that idea about maybe having a school kids' competition, designing a sign or two signs. So. You're happy with that discussion, you're, you don't have anything else you wanna add?
Nope, I'm glad to hear welcome in it, we're gonna pursue, I know, you know, it don't happen overnight, but.
No.
At least we're taking a step forward.
All right, moving right along, noise ordinance. Katie, you wanna brief us on what you received there?
Um, so this is kind of in response to the last meeting, we had a group from Molnav that were dealing with noise issues. And so this is West Rutland's objectionable noise ordinance that Sergeant Cross had recommended. I included in your packet, Mike, BLCT's response about it. But it's just up for you guys to discussion, how you wanna proceed.
All right, this is from Leagues. And it's a brief statement. First, I wanna briefly introduce myself, in case you have dealt with other MAC attorneys in the past. And he tells us his name, Romanoff? I guess that's how, I must point out that we're generalists of municipal law, and without reviewing all the relevant documentation involved, we wouldn't be able to completely advise.
You're welcome, we're not gonna tell you an answer.
Right.
That's all it is.
That's what I was saying.
Let's, let's do the abbreviated, the abbreviated version, they're not gonna give you an answer. Yeah.
He wasn't gonna give you any advice, but then the last paragraph he does.
Yes, it may be though, though, that your ordinance is unenforceable for vagueness or the lack of specific measurable standards and frequencies. The primary standard is that a reasonable objective person can understand what constitutes a nuisance under the ordinance. A more specific ordinance will make it easier for you to enforce, and will also make it less likely to be voided as unconstitutional, whatever, vague. Adding specific intensities, durations, and frequencies while helped with enforcement and ensure is not deemed unconstitutionally vague. It's not clear to me that audible at a distance of 50 feet, as noted in Article 4, is sufficiently specific. Consult the town attorney. I also think that since there are no specific intensities, durations, nor frequencies, there is no need to purchase equipment. What are you measuring? I did that all on aye.
It, the, the way I interpreted that, that whole comment was, if you wanna adopt this thing, it's like putting a lock on your front door, it'll keep the honest people honest, but people who are gonna wanna make the noise, this thing is gonna be not enforceable.
Not gonna be worth it.
That's the way, that's the way I interpreted that.
If it's something before we were to get into ever adopting something like that, I'd like to see that run by our town attorney especially.
For sure.
Because I agree with that, it, it sounds good on paper, but to enforce it, I don't know.
It may not be a bad thing either to, you know, use it as a threat to somebody that's making noises, and say, we have a, a noise.
We can be fined $500 for.
Yeah, so you might wanna calm down, and maybe they will.
That's true too.
So.
It's, I think personally, for me, I like Bob's suggestion, run this just by bill, so we have a legal notice, and then we'll discuss it, so this might be something, if Bill gets back to us by next meeting.
You would like me to send it to him?
Yep.
I, I don't have a problem with sending it to Bill, if that's the way you wanna go about it. I, I think Art's right in that it might offer somewhat of a deterrent, possibly. I, you know, I don't, I don't know how much it's gonna do for you in the grand scheme of things, but it might offer a hint of a deterrent, at least, you know, so.
Leagues suggested that we run it by the town's attorney.
Yep, so, so start there, that's fine.
I think that we should do. Anybody have any other problems with that?
Nope.
Nope.
Go for it. Moving right along.
Only money.
Yeah. Right, good point, Art. New business, town credit card.
Um, well, before we go there, I was gonna make, we technically added the Clarendon Planning Commission appointment.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we reappoint Brian Johnson to the Clarendon Planning Commission.
The second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Do you have Bronson still here?
I think he stepped out.
Oh, okay, well, I was gonna ask.
He's coming back. Here he comes back.
I think he's for the zoning administrator topic.
Okay.
But he's, not him anyway. Okay, all of them in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
I will let him know.
Okay.
And with the understanding that when he moves out, he's no longer eligible.
Correct.
That's what he said when he said he was willing.
That's his request. Somebody, can you get Bronson?
Do you wanna talk about that now?
Well, we got credit card first.
Yeah, but just to let him know that we're gonna talk about that in a couple of minutes, so. Yeah, real quick. Otherwise, we'll be sitting here half the night, probably making the deal. Is this snowing out?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we end winter. It was real.
I didn't see an outbreak, but I don't know.
Then we're gonna flood.
All right, then, uh, let's move on then. Where he went to?
I don't know, he was there, I don't know, something moved.
All right. That zoning administrator.
You have the, like, license too.
All right, before we get to that, we'll do this credit card thing, you wanna?
Sure. Sure. Um, so currently, we do not have a town credit card, so anytime that there needs to be a purchase made, um, for the town, um, an employee has to personally expend the funds and then be reimbursed, um, which we've been doing it that way for years now, um, but it's just not the best way to do business. Um, so I've done a little research and, um, spoken with our bank, um, about a bank card, it's called a business card, and I provided you with that information. Um, as part of that, I wanted to make sure that a very thorough credit card usage policy would be put into place as well to govern the use of said credit card. Um, so I, I reached out to, uh, a bunch of towns and asked them to send me what their policies were, so that I could take basically the best of all of the policies, uh, sent to me and put them into one, uh, potentially for our town. Um, Ferrisburg seemed to have a very thorough policy, so I did base ours mostly off of theirs. Uh, I did add a few things, such as I thought it was very important to have an approval threshold, for instance, the board needing to pre-approve any expenditure, um, I put it in as over $500, um, just because I do know that the road commissioner, for instance, might be looking for parts or something online, um, and finding, uh, more reasonable prices online for items, um, and then would be having us expend that, um, and so for instance, to give you an idea, I had, um, the road commissioner come to me a couple of weeks ago and ask me to purchase a, a filter kit or something that he needed for Down Below that was $80. So I personally purchased it and then got reimbursed by the town. Um, however, I wanted there to be a, a cap to that, um, e- even if it's within the individual offices' budgets, like road commissioner, town clerk, um, treasurer, um, so that the board would have, uh, more authority and say, and, um, that it would be more transparent. Um, I also added that, uh, the, I would like a review process of card statements by the board as well for transparency, and not that that is anything that, um, would be very cumbersome, but that every time the statement would come in, I would compile the information with all of the attached receipts, um, and provide that to you to look over, much as you do with the, um, current bills that you've had to approve and sign off on, just so that you can see exactly what was put on the credit card, um, and, and how that, how that works, how it was spent, of course, anything, again, um, being over that $500, if that's what you choose to set, um, as a limit, would be pre-approved by you anyways. So I emailed out at the end of last week of the potential credit card policy for Clarendon in a draft version, as well as, um, the People's United, uh, form that would need to be voted on and approved by the entire board in order to open up this business card. Um, without that, they, they will not do that, um, just because it needs to be a board decision. On it, it does list, um, the following officers of the municipality as authorized, um, it lists myself as treasurer, and then Robert Bixby as board clerk. Um, the authorized officers will be able to make changes to the credit card services as a whole, uh, however, they will not be able to raise the credit limit. Um, so when discussing with the bank who should be a secondary, they, they obviously, um, say the treasurer should be a primary, but that there needs to be a secondary just in case that something happens to, like, myself in this position, and they recommended the board clerk, uh, be in that secondary position.
Does anybody have any questions?
Well, there's one person who's been here for quite a few years now, um, I think it's been probably overdue.
Mm-hmm.
I know my credit card's been used a few times over the years, um, I know we also had a pretty significant purchase a few years ago of a truck motor that had to go on a credit card, and then we had to reimburse, and I think in that case, it was actually a citizen that stepped forward and did it. Um, so I think that what's being proposed is, uh, I mean, I run a school, but it's a business, and we have business credit cards, and there's very clear guidelines on how they get used and how, which I think has been done here, and I think that, again, I think it's probably overdue.
I would like to add that there would only be one card, um, so we're not talking about issuing multiple cards to, like, one to the road commissioner, one to the town clerk, one to the treasurer, we're not talking about that, there would be one card, and there wouldn't be a name on the card, it would say Town of Clarendon Accounts Payable, and if the card needed to be used, um, it would need to be checked out, because it would be locked up here at the office, or locked up in a safe location, um, and then checked back in. And that is detailed out in the policy as well, there's a procedure there.
What's the total amount on it?
The credit limit, um, that is proposed is $15,000. And it's, um, on a 55-day cycle, not a 30-day cycle.
That makes it easier to pay off. Do you have any comments?
No, other than, it, it should have been done a while back, quite a while back, because the people, I know there's two or three in the past that have used their personal cards for purchasing for the town, and that, that's not right, uh, they should not have to, you know, and Robert hit one of the big ones, is on that, uh, motor purchase.
That was, I mean, that was a few years ago, but that was one of the big things we've run into, where that was one of the big ones.
Art, do you have anything you want to?
No, it's, I mean, we, we have to pay bills, so however we pay them, whatever makes it easier for the town. I do, I do think it'll make it easier to, you know, follow where the money goes.
Yeah. And, and, you know, the thing is too, and you know this with your business and everything else, you know, the reality is, in this day and age, you're ordering stuff offline. It's just, it's gonna happen. It's not, I mean, yes, we like to get our parts local as much as possible, but there's gonna be that thing that's gonna pop up, and oh my goodness, the local doesn't have it, but it can be here two days offline.
Exactly.
We, we gotta have that availability, so.
Exactly, yeah. Even if it takes, so, a place like Harbor Freight, they just moved into town, yes, they're a chain, they're not a local business, but they just moved into town, they do not set up corporate accounts, so they do not have the ability to have a corporate charge account. They have extremely competitive pricing, so-
Most of their stuff is not worth buying.
Yeah.
Or there have been a few things that have been needed by the road crew, and that they have depended to Harbor Freight, but they've had to, then the road commissioner has purchased them personally and had to be reimbursed for them. They, they do have it, so we're tax exempt, and like, that's another part of that, we're gonna need to make sure wherever we're purchasing from, we still have our tax exempt status, but still, again-
Are you gonna be able to review the, um, the account online?
I believe so.
So that you can do it on a somewhat regular basis, every couple of days, to make sure that somebody hasn't compromised the card?
Yes.
Because we've all had issues with that.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's one thing I would-
Definitely keep an eye on.
Yeah, you gotta check it, you know, at least once a week and make sure that, you know-
Nobody's dove into it.
Being done.
Yeah.
Somebody skimmed the number or something, yeah.
Right.
Pictures of grocery shopping in Texas or whatever.
Yeah. Right.
And Heidi, if I understood you correctly, if someone needed the card, they would sign it out and sign it back into you, am I correct?
Yes, and when they do that, of all receipts, all original receipts have to be provided for the purchase that they made. And again, if it's a purchase that's gonna be over $500, then it has to come, or if it's an unbudgeted expense, it would need to come before you for approval anyways.
Right, right. Okay, I, I don't have a problem with it, uh-
In that case, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the credit card policy the way Heidi has it written.
Do you second to that?
I'll second that.
Alright, any further discussion? Hearing on all of the favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Let's make it unanimous then, for those members present.
I think you also have to sign the bank resolution, is that right, Heidi? Yes, the bank resolution is what would be needed for the bank to be able to issue-
Which, that's just the chairman, right?
Just the chair.
So the policy has a space for all, uh, all of the board members to sign off on, but the, uh, resolution is just the board chair.
I'll make a motion that the board chair sign the resolution for the board. Do you second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, and then how about the, you need another motion for all of us?
I think we technically approved the first one anyway.
Yeah.
You're good on that one.
Alright, then, off.
Thank you.
Bob will go down that way.
You need, could use it already.
Uh, Heidi, do you have anything else you want to report?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Katie, do you have anything you'd-
Um, are we doing our officers' report? Is that-
Pardon?
Are we doing officers' report?
Yeah.
Um, just that, I believe the first reporting period for ARPA money, um, it ends, like, this 31st of the month, and then our first reporting is due at the end of April, even though we haven't spent any of that money, I do believe we still have to do a report, so I'll be looking into that next month.
Anything else? Does anybody in the public have anything they want to discuss?
Liquor license?
No, we gotta do that.
No, they didn't.
Usually officers is like the last thing.
Yeah, well, I-
Technically, we gotta, technically, we gotta do zoning administrator too.
Yeah. Uh, anyone want to make a, here, read that, I, I only have one eye.
Everything's in order, Gloria, right? Yeah, so we have a liquor license tonight, um, for, uh, Stonehedge, so, um-
One is for their restaurant, one is for their carry permit.
Okay. Right, okay. Um, so I'll go ahead, so there's another one in there too. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve both liquor license for, uh, Stonehedge.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing on all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Art, did you second that?
I did.
Hey, Rob. Sorry, Rob.
No, it's fine. You're gonna do zoning now?
Yeah. Like the, make a motion.
That one too.
Yeah.
Um, so I could, I, I mean, can we have a brief discussion before we decide how we're gonna tackle this?
Alright, go, go for it.
Um-
It's not even football season now, I'm like, really?
So we don't have, obviously, the appointment of zoning administrator has lapsed, is my understanding.
Yep.
We are receiving letters at this point, which are being passed to the planning commission. Um, at this point, to my knowledge, there's only one applicant-
Yep.
-currently, which the planning commission has not had a chance to discuss.
April 4th, they have a meeting.
Cr- okay, so that answers that question. So, again, anybody who wants zoning administrator, if they're interested in it, needs to continue to send letters at this point, obviously, um, but my question that I have had, I know that the, um, current chair of the planning commission has offered to, on an interim basis, fill the slot for at least the two weeks or three weeks until we're able to appoint a new person. I just want to make sure, and I didn't see anything in the, the emails bouncing back and forth unless I missed them, about whether or not we're sure that that's legal.
So, yes, I had a conversation with Jeff over the phone, and he, I'm pretty sure specifically told me that the chair of the planning commission cannot be zoning administrator because it's like conflict of interest kind of.
Okay, but-
But I don't know if that could be-
But we also, we also shouldn't be asking-
A former.
An outgoing-
No, he just told me that over the phone, but then Bronson said in like section something that it was allowed in his email. I can look back.
And we have like six permits and a couple-
I was gonna say, you've got a stack of permits, you've got a stack of permits is the problem.
I personally, as one member of the board, have no issue, um, at this point in time with the, it, but we make sure that the understanding is that that interim individual will be just that, until the planning commission-
So again, for me, it comes down to a question of legality. If we're, if we step out and do something illegal tonight, that's a problem. That, that's my concern, and not only, not to mention the fact, a- and, I, I know Bronson was here a minute ago, I wish he was still here, because the, the other issue is, is quite frankly, how it looks.
Yeah.
That's, that's the other prob, the optics of it are terrible. Um, and I realize that we're, we're up against the wall, and I realize that we've got a stack of permits, um, but at the same time, we need to make sure that we're doing something legal and not illegal.
Want me to call him?
What is, what does the statute say if our zoning guy up and quits? Who, who's responsible in the meantime? Is it, it, does it fall on the-
Probably is one of those that, that's the boss, would be my guess.
Falls on the select board.
I, I wouldn't be a bit surprised, I mean, I don't know what the statute actually says, but there's a lot of other jobs that if there's vacancies, it falls to us, like health, health officer, if there's a, if, if it falls off, it falls to the select board, 'cause-
Alright, how about if we consider a motion stating that, um, we would accept the fact that, uh, Bronson Spencer, who's chair of the planning commission, will be temporarily made the zoning administrator based on us finding some legal information as to whether or not we can, we have the, uh, authority to do that.
Why don't, why don't we just appoint Mike Collaption as interim? He's got nothing to do.
Oh, right. I only have one eye, Art. I can't see out of this eye. So I, I'd have to have Katie follow me around reading stuff.
I would look it up on my internet.
Uh, I'm, uh-
I was gonna say, what do you think, Bob?
I'm, I'm thinking like Robert is, uh, the legality of it, uh, I wouldn't want to appoint Bronson or anyone without being absolutely sure, right? They go and sign a bunch of permits, six months later, find out person's got a house half up, and all of a sudden, the permit's no good.
Alright, then why don't we do this? Katie, check that with Leagues, uh, to find out if we have the authority or the Attorney General's office, uh-
Gloria, did you have something about that, like you asked Leagues?
If it falls to the select board-
But what?
If it falls to the select board, I'd be willing to do it with Bronson's help, 'cause I don't know anything about it, and I know Bronson has been there before, so i- if Bronson's willing to help me out on an interim basis, now, I'm not-
We're talking a couple of weeks.
Yeah, that, that, I would be willing to, to help out for a couple of weeks with Bronson's help.
Yeah.
That way, it's, it's legal if, if it falls to the select board, if that's what it is.
Well, here's what I was gonna say.
Um, so I'm looking up in the, um, state records, and it says that in, um, in the absence of a zoning administrator, that there should be someone appointed in the role of the acting zoning administrator. It says if your community has not already done so, it should consider appointing an acting ZA, and acting ZA has the same duties and responsibilities of the ZA, but serves in the ZA's absence. Um, thus, the acting ZA is liable to step in and carry out, that the municipalities allow the appointed ZA to call upon an acting ZA when the ZA has a conflict of interest, blah, 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 um, but it, there's no clear-
Who it can be.
Right.
But I don't believe there's a conflict-
The ZA can hold other offices in the municipality with the exception of membership on the Board of Adjustment or Development Review Board.
Bronson is on the-
Bronson's on the BZA, so he can't, so that, that eliminates him from that.
Is that interim though?
Say that again.
Is that interim or just zoning administrator?
Is that interim or just zoning administrator?
That is the ZA. However, generally speaking, when we've asked Leagues about something like that, they've said that it all, it carries through. So like when we talked about councilors and second councils.
BZA too, right? We're techni, we're technically on the BZA too, right?
I am.
We all are. So I would say that eliminates which our applicant is on the BZA, right?
I'm not sure.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
No? Okay.
I don't think so.
Well, I still, still say that...
When people call a complaint, I'll give them the select board.
Even though I appreciate you reading that. Heidi, I appreciate you reading that. But formally tomorrow, we'll call the state's attorney and have them get something back to us in writing. And then we'll have a special meeting on the select board to... To appoint Bronson temporarily, if that's legal.
Your sugar house or mine? It's gonna be busy at the end of the week.
But if we can find that information out, we can have a 10-minute meeting of the majority of the select...
I mean, again, if, if you find out that it's legal and that you can appoint virtually anybody as an interim, fine, but I...
Then do you wanna make that a motion pending? It's a, while we're all sitting here.
It also does say that if an acting ZA is appointed or if the municipality appoints an assistant ZA, that the municipality must have clear policies regarding the authority of such position. So you're aware.
The authority of the interim?
That it's more than just appointing, then you have to have guidance.
Put the guardrails on them, what they're allowed and what they can, what they can and can't do.
Well, guardrails for us would be just to finalize the pending...
Process the pending permits. Gloria, you are the one who typically handles them, so when you get, prior to this, when you get, like you've got six on hand right now or whatever, what's the normal process time? How fast are they turning around?
Been a week or two at the most.
Is what we're used to?
Contact, somebody goes out and checks and...
So we're already behind the eight ball.
So what's the, do we wanna make that motion, nomination, or whatever you wanna use the term, to appoint him only with the consideration of what, if that's legal, while we're all sitting right here? If it's not legal, then we'll have to do something different. Otherwise, we could check on this, the legality of it, and then have a special meeting or emergency meeting.
Wouldn't surprise me if Leagues doesn't give you an answer at all.
No, but the secretary of state's office would.
Maybe.
That's what the statutes of law.
So they would, they would give us guidance? So, all right, so I guess I'll make this a motion. I would say that pending clearance...
Approval.
Approval from the secretary of state's office, I would be okay with Bronson Spencer filling in for, and I, I'm gonna put a timetable on it, three weeks. I want this done and dealt with, so a three-week appointment. And I, again, to put the guardrails on it, to only process the pending permits that we currently have.
It means to your next meeting, so if they're meeting the four.
Which three weeks, we should be at our next meeting, right?
Right. And they're gonna make a recommendation from their meeting.
Yep.
Which is the legal way to do this. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Would it be worth expense a quick phone call to Bill Blumer tomorrow morning? Could he tell us right off quick?
He would, but if we can get...
I don't know if he will or not.
The state is free.
Yeah, state's free.
Even a phone call to Blumer costs money.
Oh yeah, it costs money.
That's true.
And they are, the state is the, you know, the authority.
They're the ones that wrote the statutes. They should know.
They're gonna give you a more thorough answer, theoretically.
So...
Call the question and...
Yeah, all of them in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So it was all four of us, Katie. See how easy this job is?
Mike, I have a question.
It's a breeze.
Yes.
You only have one zoning administrator? You don't have an assistant?
No.
Is there a reason why you don't have an assistant?
I, as long as I've been on this board, there was never an assistant. Over 30 years.
It's, it's cropped up every once in a while, but it's never, and there also was lack of interest too. That was one of the other problems. Didn't have anybody that wanted it. Can't imagine why.
Katie, I think we fully emptied this thing out here, so... Bob, well, let me ask public, is there any public questions?
Mike, I need somebody on my rec committee, like a select board member to be on the rec committee temporarily if I get my rec committee more full.
All right. Does anybody wanna volunteer?
How, who, what do you have right now, Matt?
I have Mike and Heather. And myself. So maybe I just have the license of select board member to oversee things, maybe just, not be chair, but just be there to oversee things.
I would love to oversee you, Matt.
I can imagine you would. I nominate Art.
You wanna be on another board with this guy?
I don't care, I'll do it.
Sounds like you gotta volunteer.
I could sit in, but I'm, you know, with the veterans home and all this stuff, I got a lot of things going.
So that'll leave you what, two vacancies or three?
No idea. At least two, yeah.
You'll have at least two other vacancies, I think.
It'll be very often.
There is gonna be a question, someone asked you, speak to it a little bit, about using one of the fields for...
Yeah, there's a football, football people wanna look at from Castleton area maybe that wanna look at using our rec field. So I know the Little League is using it. They're literally looking, looking at fixing up the backfield.
Yep.
Also, making that a usable baseball field possibly. So we just gotta find out what the football team wants to do, use it for and if they're gonna tear up the field with your cleats or, or what's gonna happen. We don't know. I just sent an email today and I've sent the email back to the person asking them to meet me at our next, at our next meeting, which is gonna be in April sometime.
If I understand it correctly, in that email, it was mentioned that there are people that live in town that would be playing on the sport. Now, the question I have for the insurance side of that...
The age-old question.
Yes.
Gets asked every year.
They would need insurance as a, as an organization. They would need it, like the Little League has insurance.
Right.
And so they would need insurance too.
So that would be a good question to ask that individual.
Yeah, we, we, I just wanna find out what he's looking for, what, how many times they wanna use it for, et cetera, all the stuff. I know the Little, the Little League really wants to use it, both fields if they can. Obviously, we can share things and stuff, but they wanna put the time and effort into fixing that backfield up.
Yep.
So is Art gonna be on the rec committee?
I guess so.
You appoint him?
Can you see how excited he is? Just dripping in enthusiasm.
I didn't want him to slip by.
We have our next meeting at the Sugar House?
It would be in April, Art, for our next meeting.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be after our, our morning bids come in, after April 8th, I think our morning bids are due.
So yeah, you technically need a motion on that. So I'll make a motion that we point Arthur Menard to the recreation committee.
Is there any, well, I'm gonna ask the conversation, all in favor, please say aye.
Did you not?
I have to refuse myself.
All right, done and done.
Let me ask Gloria first.
Too late.
Bob, do you have anything?
No, I'm set for tonight.
Me too.
Rob?
I am all set for tonight.
Art, you got any?
I did look into the server.
Oh, okay.
Information on the server. I talked to a bunch of people that do that kinda stuff. And the $105 an hour, which sounds like a lot of money, really isn't. Surprisingly, it really is not a lot of money for technical support. I also asked about the backup tapes. He said those are seven years old and he would highly recommend...
Updating.
Updating them. So basically, that's...
It is what it is.
It is what it is. Yeah, he said he'll re-quote it when it gets closer because the way things are...
All over the place.
Yeah. Especially with chips and stuff. It could be worse, it could be better.
Yep.
So...
All right. Thank you, Art.
Just as an update, any further crashes since we talked last?
There was one, but I don't think it was a server.
Okay.
It was just the internet.
Okay. So no, no, no like full outages or anything like that since? Okay, that's good.
Just before I ask for a motion in the meeting, you're gonna get back to us norm when you have this committee established and then report to us so that we can move ahead with this.
Yes.
All right. I entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second? He beat you.
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Done and done.